Twenty-five, I call this hearing to order. Would you please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good evening and welcome to the Planning Commission. If you are in the room and you think you might like to testify tonight or plan to testify, will you go ahead and please stand and respond to this? All right. Please raise your right hand and do you solemnly swear to tell the whole truth before this commission tonight? If so, say I do.
I do.
All right, thank you very much. You may be seated. Also, just wanted to ask if you speak before saying anything, only speak at the microphone and tell us your name and your address, and then also to approach and give only questions to the chairman, and we will make sure we expedite and get an answer to you. So, let's proceed with the roll.
Commissioner Nesbit.
Here.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Here.
Commissioner Torres.
Here.
Commissioner Young.
Here.
Chairman Wiley.
Here. And let the record show Eric has communicated he will be about five minutes late, so he will be present. All right, I'm looking for a motion.
Chair.
Yes.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
All right, we have a consent agenda. Any discussion, we have a first and a second. All right, seeing none, let's take a vote.
Commissioner Nesbit.
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Yes.
Commissioner Torres.
Yes.
Commissioner Young.
Yes.
And Chairman Wiley.
Yes. And the motion to pass the consent agenda passes five to zero.
Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Nesbit.
I make a motion that we continue case twenty-five-one-hundred-dash-twelve rezoning twelve-nine-three-nine East Forty Highway and forty-six-eleven South North Fleet Road for the June tenth meeting.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, thank you for that second. Any discussion? All right, I will call for the vote.
Commissioner Nesbit.
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Yes.
Commissioner Torres.
Yes.
Commissioner Young.
Yes.
Chairman Wiley.
Yes, and the motion to continue case number twenty-five-one-hundred-twelve has passed, and we will rehear that on June the tenth. All right.
Chair.
Yes, Commissioner?
I make a motion that we continue case twenty-four-dash-four-hundred-dash-zero-six, short-term rental, three-hundred North Cedar Avenue.
All right, we have a first motion.
Second.
And a second, any discussion? All right, hearing none, call for the vote.
Commissioner Nesbit.
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Yes.
Commissioner Torres.
Yes.
Commissioner Young.
Yes.
Chairman Wiley.
Yes, and the motion to continue case number two-four-four-hundred-zero-six, pass for the short-term rental, once again, it will be heard on June the tenth. Right, that moves us to our public hearings and staff. Case number two-five-one, two-five-zero-one, what do we need to know?
This is a rezoning and PUD for Queen City Kitchenettes. The applicant is Sparks Real Estate LLC. Again, the action is to rezone from R six, single-family residential, and to R thirty PUD, high-density residential plan unit development, and approve the preliminary development plan associated with that. So, from the vicinity map here that you can see, this is basically on twenty-four highway just south of Sugar Creek and not far from Sterling Avenue. There we go. Okay, so we'll begin with a slide with the zoning and the history area. The vicinity of this existing property, to the north of US twenty-four highway, is the city of Sugar Creek, location of liquor store doors, smoke store, smoke shop, and there's an auto body shop there. To the south is a subdivision, a street of single-family homes, zoned R six. To the east is a restaurant property, zone C two, and to the west is a laundromat property, also zone C two. Property characteristics of the property, this is a request to rezone the property from R six, single-family residential, to R thirty PUD, high-density residential plan unit development, and to approve a preliminary development plan. Sparks Real Estate LLC purchased the property at one-one-six-zero-one East US twenty-four Highway approximately six months ago. The location has been known for many years as Queen City Kitchenettes, and consists of fifteen buildings, eighteen living units, and twenty parking spaces. So, the property is perched on a high spot along the south side of twenty-four highway corridor. It's set above a small retaining wall and behind a black chain link fence, the complex, this complex of small, well-maintained motor lodge kitchenettes that sits up close to Highway twenty-four. The existing, what was built as a motel travel lodging use with its existing long-term residential uses, was built decades ago along this portion of the highway corridor. The adjacent and nearby uses along the highway are mostly retail, restaurant, and some service businesses. And again, a single-family residential lies to the south, and you can see that clearly by this aerial photograph that is above. Analysis of the property, the existing legal non-conforming driving and parking surfaces are not being expanded or changed, except for one proposed additional parking space. Aside from the thirteen standard parking spaces and one van-accessible parking space, individuals will also park on portions in the drive in front of individual units. The existing elevations and building footprints are not being expanded or changed. The site contains a mix of different-looking, single-family units and a couple of multifamily structures. No new construction is anticipated. Three, there are no apparent historic or archaeological issues with the property. The water, sanitary sewer, and electrical services are connected to the structures on this property. This property is not in a federally identified flood zone, nor is it in any of the city's designated stream buffer zones. The applicant shall provide an opaque fence for a screen along the west side of the property, and the existing fence and retaining wall lie to the east and south. Given no new construction on the property is planned, no additional landscaping will be required. The city does not have any additional capel improvements planned for, near this area. MODOT has recently completed curb gutter and sidewalk improvements for this section of US twenty-four highway. And so, here's a site condition drawing showing basically the existing layout of the Queen City Kitchenettes as is. And this is just a indication, notification zone of all the adjacent nearby properties that received notifications for being within one-hundred-and-eighty-five feet of the proposed rezoning. And this is that, the front entrance coming down to twenty-four highway, standing on the sidewalk that's between the curbing for twenty-four and the small retaining wall that also has this black chain link fence above that goes across the entire front of the property, and you can see one of the structures behind here, behind the sign, in kind of the good condition that the buildings appear to be in. Staff recommends approval of this rezoning and preliminary development plan with the following conditions: A six-foot opaque fence shall be provided along the west side of the property within sixty days of approval of this zoning. And number two, a van-accessible handicap space along the required, with the required signage, shall be provided.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions for the staff? Hearing none, I invite the residente for this case to come forward. And please state your name and your address.
Madam Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Jim Gamble. I own an architecture firm of some years by the name of the Gamble Company Incorporated, and I reside at thirty-five-hundred South Mize Ridge Court in Independence, Missouri. Mr. Shane Sparks, who is here with us today, is the owner and developer of Shane Sparks Real Estate LLC. He purchased this property approximately six, seven months ago. Location has been known for many years as Queen City Kitchenettes, and consists of fifteen buildings, eighteen living units, twenty parking spaces. Property is currently well-maintained, and among other tenants currently houses a population approximately seven otherwise homeless people, sometimes in coordination with not-for-profit organizations supporting such activities. Less than a month, or a couple of months ago, the City of Independence Community Development Department offered to the Independence Council an ordinance changing substantially and subsequently executed that modified the operation of recently acquired property, and then the city sent a notification to the owner. Typically and historically in such manners, Independence and other jurisdictions, when changing zoning rules, permit the continuation of former activities and then designate such parcels as legally non-conforming, allowing that title to remain until the property has become empty or abandoned for a designated length of time. Only at that time does enforcement of new zoning rules then occur. In this instance, however, the city requested the new owner rezone the property from the current R six to an R thirty PUD. Please accept our submittal today and the comprehensive one that the staff presented for this property. We're here to answer any questions. Since I sent notifications to owners within one-hundred-and-eighty-five feet of the property, and I did get a, receive a phone call from an individual identifying themselves owning property west of the property, and that was requesting a fence, and I presume they talked to the city, and that's one of the stipulations they have indicated, a fence and another handicap parking space, and I understand that's okay with our current and new owner of the property, and he can say anything he would like. He's the owner, and that concludes, I'm here to answer questions if you have any.
All right. Mr. Sparks, could you, just for the record, state your name and your address?
Shane Sparks. Address is five-two-one Northeast Emerald Drive, Lees, Missouri, six-four-zero-six-four.
All right, thank you very much. What do you want us to know about this property?
I think Jim answered quite a bit of that. Currently, right now, we have seventeen tenants living there. That varies from Section Eight to Swoop and different other organizations, and most of them want to stay there for, you know, as long as they can. So, this is kind of just thrown at us initially about them having to move, and that's why we're here today, to make sure that we can rezone this and they can stay living there.
So, the rezoning participate, kind of precipitated this because they would like to stay there beyond the thirty-day?
Yes, yes ma'am.
Okay, great. Can you tell us a little bit about the condition? I've heard nothing but how good the condition is of these buildings, but can you specifically?
So, when I purchased the property, you know, each unit varied, you know, in different conditions. They were, they were running it as a motel hotel with, you know, about four of the units, and we just started putting them back together. Like utilities and stuff were on, on all the, all the buildings. I think there's about thirty, I have thirty accounts with Independence Power and Light for this facility, because everything's metered separately, but they're pretty good shape, I would say, for the most part. Like, we passed all of our inspections for Independence, for our landlord license initially when we, and we submitted those to the city. So, we, we did pass all of those inspections as well.
Okay. Anybody have questions for the owner?
Chair.
Yes, Commissioner.
Okay, so basically you got, looks like fifteen buildings, and you bought it just to help out the community, correct?
So, that was, yes.
Okay, and now the city's saying we need to put you at PUD R thirty. Now, when you go to this statue, if I'm not mistaken, then he can go in there and modify it and build an apartment complex if he wanted to, correct? Brian?
I mean, it, yes.
Okay, that's what, that's what I thought, because I mean, because now we're upping the stakes here, he can tear everything down, he could put an eight-story building.
The thing about that is, since it's a PUD, you would, you would have to come back to you, because it'd be an alteration of the plan, and you'd have to vote on a new preliminary development plan.
Okay, so that's, that's how we keep it intact that way?
Right, because they'd have to come back to you, and you'd have to look at a plan.
I mean, I don't know how this got by so long as this being a residential, when it was running as a hotel and things like that, that's what kind of bothers me, how this get by so many years being that away. It's not his fault, it looks like it's the city's fault for going this long, so that's what I think.
Right, any additional questions, anyone? All right, thank you very much. Any additional questions for staff? All right. Is there anybody that would like to speak in favor of this case?
Yes.
All right, go ahead and come up one at a time, state your name and your address, and then share with us what you would have us, and did you stand and swear in?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, great. Make sure you only speak one at a time and always in the mic.
Hello, I'm Angela Wright, and my address is eleven-thousand-one-one-six-zero-one East US Highway twenty-four, unit M in Independence.
Okay.
Okay, I've lived there since November, and the one thing I can say is this is the nicest place I have lived in since November of twenty-twenty, when I got my first place up here. He comes over immediately and fixes anything. I can even call him with small maintenance things that a lot of other landlords wouldn't do, like I need an additional outlet right here and stuff, and he comes and takes care of it. I know I don't want to leave, because I plan to stay there until it falls down around me if I can. So, yeah, I'm, I'm in favor of this.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Steve Jung. My address is eleven-six-zero-one East US Highway twenty-four Cottage F. I've lived there in the past for a long time. It was well-run in the past. It continues to be well-run. The place is safe, quiet, friendly, and clean, and I would like to continue living there. I'm on Section Eight, and if it goes, I'm out on the street. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
My name's Carl. My name's Carl Short. I reside at one-one-six-zero-one East twenty-four Highway, Independence, and I've lived there probably not quite two months yet, and it's probably one of the nicest places that the VA has helped me get in a long time, and, but like the lady said, that if there's ever any problem, all you got to do is call landlord, and he'll be right out to fix it, and it, like he, the other man said, which was part of my thought, it's clean, it's quiet, there's never no problems, and I'd like to stay there till the day I die. Doesn't that fit?
All right, thank you so much. Right, anyone else that'd like to speak in favor? Anyone who would like to speak in opposition? All right, seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close the hearing. All right, any final questions for staff?
Chair.
Yes.
Is there any reason that we have to have the handicap? I mean, is that just part of the PUD? Is that why you guys are making him put that handicap?
I mean, it, it's something that's part of federal law now that should be there.
Okay, and he doesn't have to do any more landscaping or anything, since it's already...
He's not doing any construction, so.
Okay, so that's why he doesn't have to do...
We're not requiring that.
Okay, just have to put up the fence?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Brian, or Rick, or, or somebody, I heard the gentleman use the word cottage. He was in Cottage F, I think. So, in my mind, this sounds like a motel that now has some, hopefully, long-term residence, and that's why the PUD became necessary, correct? But it also sounds like it's a great example of a cottage industry community, might be a great example for the rest of the area with some tiny cottage homes. Thoughts? Is that, is that why?
I mean...
This, the PUD is kind of required, because we're doing something?
It's not really the PUD part, it's actually, he needed the R thirty part.
Okay.
Because it's residential in nature now, so, and of course, we do have the new Western Independence overlay to the south that actually contemplates...
Doing the same thing.
Little clusters of cottages as well.
Okay, sounds like thinking outside the box a little bit, so I'm excited by that. All right, any other comments or questions? All right, seeing none, I call for the vote.
Chair.
Yes.
I make a motion.
Yes, I asked for a motion, too.
I make a motion to approve case twenty-five-dash-one-twenty-five-dash-o-one rezoning PUD, it doesn't say, PUD eleven, eleven-six-zero-one East twenty-four Highway.
All right, I have a first and a second from Eric, and I will call the vote.
Commissioner Nesbit.
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Yes.
Commissioner Ashbaugh.
Yes.
Commissioner Torres.
Yes.
Commissioner Young.
Yes.
Chairman Wiley.
Yes, and the motion passes six to zero. Congratulations and good luck. And I'm glad to have you all as residents of Independence. All right, we're going to move on to our next case. It is case number twenty-five-two-hundred-dash-zero-four for a specialty permit.
Yeah, this is an application submitted by Anthony and Brandy Carnes. They're the owner of Tattoo Parlour, Distinguished Body Art LLC. The request is for special use permit approval for a tattoo and body art establishment at the Independence Center.
Excuse me, I'm going to ask you to please exit the room if you're going to talk.
Here's a slide showing the notification area, zoning map of the subject site and the surrounding properties. To the north is shopping center, the general retail, financial services, restaurants, car wash. To the east and southeast is a apartment complex, Cornerstone Apartments. To the south, that apartment complex wraps around the Independence Center site, and then to the west is the highway, and in a few more general retail establishments. So, I limited the property characteristics to the suite inside the Independence Center for this particular application, since we're not discussing the, an expansion of the site or... The suite, Distinguished Body Art, has proposed to operate out of its suite one-one-zero-zero. It's located on the lower level of the Independence Center, accessed from the southwest mall entrance. The suite is approximately twenty-five-hundred square feet in size, has an open floor plan, so you enter in the entrance, are greeted with a reception desk, have a couple of couches, and your tattoo areas and piercing areas are, will be screened by temporary partitions that the applicant proposed to use. That would all be in accordance with, of course, health code. The suite does have a commercial building permit that has already been issued. It's awaiting final inspection. Once they've been approved by the Building Inspections Division, the suite will be issued a certificate of occupancy. They can obtain their health permit and business license and begin operating. The, again, the suite one-one-zero-zero is located at the southwest entrance. I've put a little arrow here on the directory just to show you where it's located, across from Dick's Sporting Goods. And then here's a floor plan submitted by the applicant. So, you got the front entrance to the tattoo establishment with the reception area, a couple piercing stations, and, and a tattoo station as well. And then here's the front of the unit, so you can see the notification sign here by the front door, and their building permit, and the lights were off when I took the pictures, so you can't see inside, but... Staff recommends approval of the special use permit with the following conditions: So, the business shall obtain an Independence Health Permit, comply with all the operational standards and health and sanitary requirements as prescribed by city code, and the business shall obtain and maintain an Independence Business License and comply with all the requirements of Chapter Five. That concludes staff's presentation. I am available for any questions.
All right. Commissioners, any questions for Gabe?
Chair.
Commissioner Nesbit.
Hey, Gabe, how many tattoo places we have now in Independence?
I would have to go back and pull the report. The last that I remember, there is six or seven.
And how many can we have?
I believe a total of eight. It's one tattoo establishment per fifteen thousand residents, and the City of Independence has about a hundred-and-twenty thousand residents. Our limit is eight, I believe, and I could go back and pull the report if you'd like to see that.
Well, I just wondered, I mean, I thought we were at our limit, but I'm guessing somebody moved out or something, is what?
Yeah, yeah, it was Ink Parlour East or something like that was on Chairman Road, and there's been a couple other that have closed down the past few years.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that's what's going on.
Yeah.
Right, any other questions for staff? Okay, I invite the owners to come on up. Please state your name, and if you're speaking, make sure you're the one on the microphone, and give us your name and your address, please.
Hi, my name is Brandy Carnes. My address is six-zero-five North Austin Street, Oak Grove, Missouri, six-four-zero-seven-five.
All right, and what would you like us to know about this?
I have a few points here. I want to encourage the chamber to know that we are extremely family-oriented, a family shop. We have combined experience of over twenty years. This is our third establishment. Members of the Independence Chamber of Commerce, as well as our own Health Department inspectors, all bring their families to be serviced at our current location, which is in Oak Grove, Green Valley, at our current establishment. This is going to be our second here in the area. This will be a premier shop, first of its kind in Missouri. It is, we have direct knowledge of it being extremely successful in other states. We include, we plan to include body piercing, permanent makeup, full-body waxing, quality merchandise, high-end jewelry, and approved aftercare. I have a thirteen-years license as a statistician. We both are licensed to practice tattooing and body piercing. We are award-winning. We have been voted Best of Missouri five years in a row from Missouri Magazine. We have hundreds of hours of hands-on training certified by the Health Department. We, every person that operates out of this shop will carry a blood-borne pathogen certificate, first aid certificate. It is annually renewed. This is going to give better, safe, and higher cleanliness options. We follow the APP compliance, which is the Association of Professional Piercers, for the highest level standard of cleanliness and safety. We'd like to give our children especially another option, rather than being subject to the stapling option that they currently have when it comes to piercings. I believe that is all that I had.
I'd love to hear from you, sir.
Hi. My name's Anthony Carnes. I reside at six oh five North Austin, Oak Grove, Missouri, number A also.
Right. What should we know?
So, yeah, like my wife was saying, we're excited to be coming to Independence. I've been, I grew up around this area, Kansas City, Missouri, my whole life. So I feel like the mall needed, they're looking for more hands-on services. You know, I've been working with the city since last August to try and figure out what would be the best location, and I'm not really much of a Truman guy. I think the need was met for, like my wife was saying, the options that they have at the mall for piercings and whatnot are just not the best, healthiest, safest options. So we're going to be the first mall in Missouri in a mall setting. You know, I have a buddy in Columbia that wants to open a shop up in Columbia, but the cities aren't used to that style, I think, of a service being offered in the public. So it's going to be a very private-type setting, too. All the windows with just that picture. We got the graphics guy coming tomorrow, so it's all going to be pref-rated, where nobody can see in, but we can see out. So it's an eighty-twenty deal, where they can't see. And if there is any services, privacy issues, and there's not. We have, yeah, there's going to be no privates as far as the mall. People were asking us that, that we're like a mall location, so as far as no genital stuff or no anything with nudity. That would, that can be handled at our second OG shop in Green Valley. So as far as, it's going to be a mall setting, so it's going to be more than comfortable. I plan on eighty-five, ninety percent of the clients to be women, women and children. So with that being said, you know, it's going to be very beautiful. We put a lot of time into it so far. So with that consideration, hopefully you guys will let us join Independence to help bring revenue and extra life back to the Independence Center.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions for them?
Yes, Chair.
Yes, Commissioner.
Okay, so you're saying you're going to put up eighty-twenty on the front. That's fine. Once you're inside, though, partitions, or are you going to build rooms in there that you do your tattooing in?
No, because, so we have wipeable partitions, like real high-end ones that you can build that, because the rooms have to be a ten-by-ten area. So I have more than enough where we create our sections where the stations are laid out for when we do services. Those can be put right up before, after paperwork's done, you know, before everything's collected. When we set up our sterile area, that's how we get set up. So we can leave it up, you know, as long as we like for the day. If it's busy where we're not breaking down and setting up our walls, but as far as, we can always move or adjust to size for any kind of service.
So they're not permanent, what you're saying?
Nope. We didn't do any permanent thing to the buildings.
Okay, well, I'm not, I'm just worried about more being, you say kids and stuff come in, see somebody getting tattooed or something. I want to know if that, do you guys do that out in the open, or do you do it behind the partition?
Private, yep.
Okay.
Partitions, yep.
Okay.
It's all private services.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Yep, but it's an open floor plan as far as environment goes. You know, as far as the waiting area, we have jewelry display. It's where the old Mr. Bulkies used to be. So it's a big, nice, big, nice area that we have set up. We have merchandise set up as far as that goes, candy station, you know, water, stuff like that for everybody. So, but as far as everything will be in private.
Now, when you do the piercings, will that be behind partition, or is that open and open?
Private.
Okay.
Yep. Because out in Claire's, you know, they're just, they're just right in the chair, right in the front. So we got everyone, where our, how the setup is, every, all the stations are at the back of the shop. So you have to go through the waiting area, the seating area, to the reception, to plus, where all the products would be, to the stations that are going to be walled off in private. So.
Okay. Now, you said, she said something about premier. I don't, I guess I don't know what that's.
I guess the first one of its kind in Missouri. So we have a lot of friends like in Arizona and stuff like that that have opened up in mall locations. Because the problem with the, there's just the education with the piercing, you know, that's all done with a needle compared with a gun, you know, when she was saying stapling, which is the worst possible way to do something, as far as that goes. You know, they give them a forty-minute video and have them practice on stuffed animals. You know, it takes twelve hundred hours just to, just to even obtain a piercing license. That's your minimum, is a twelve-hundred-hour licensing. And then you have to have five years of a master license to even be able to apprentice people, which we both hold. So as far as the education and the cleanliness and how everything goes, you know, we have our own kids, and we service a ton of underage kids that just, I've seen, not done the right way, infected, keloided, scarring, you know, like that. So that was our need to come to Independence, because we could have picked a different location. But I love the mall, you know, and I'd like to see the mall stay open, you know. I'm hating to see retail shops take over everything. So I think our service and our goal is better education, you know, safer environment, clean family environment. So, yep.
Right. Well, forgive me here, but.
It's fine.
So for getting piercings and stuff, they got to have adults, what, I mean, under seventeen, sixteen? I didn't know what to.
It's anybody under eighteen is required a birth certificate, parents present that have IDs that match them. So everything's very, very strict as far as that goes.
Okay.
Has been for many years at our shop. So we even have a backside, most of the state, they have a general, if you look up the Office of Tattooing and Piercing, if you go down to, as far as establishment documents go, they will have the front of theirs, that's just a fill-out sheet. We have on our back from our other OG tattoo and piercing there, we have a filled-out, you know, addendum for your liability, you know, explains to you about infections, you know, it's a separate piece that I think should be required as far as information when people are receiving services. So we go above and beyond to try and make sure it's safe and sterile, because I have my own children. So nothing gets by without IDs, anything like that. So, yep, every time.
So what I hear you saying is premier basically means you're looking to mainstream the tattoo and piercing experience and kind of set a higher standard than what people know.
Yep.
Trying to provide an alternative, sorry, to the norm, the taboo of it just being a grungy street shop on, you know, the side. If you see our current one, it's very, we've always prided ourselves on being very family-friendly. It'll be very approachable. We clean, warm, well-lit. And it is, we are planning to set a higher standard and trailblaze, I guess you could say, and see what's possible, you know, what it, what it could be. It's a four-billion-dollar-a-year industry, so it's, it should be, shouldn't be seen as taboo and dirty when it can be done in a very highlighted way.
City aside, I'm just curious, what was the center's kind of first response when you said we want to bring this experience to this Independence Center?
They were extremely excited.
Really?
They were extremely excited. We've gotten a lot of great feedback. The only feedback, which I started off with, was they were concerned about privacy, services, it being contained, and we're not even going to offer them as far as anything that requires privacy, as far as, you know, disclosing of any kind. It's not going to be done at that location. But they, we've got some really, we went around to Foot Locker, a couple of businesses, they were super excited. They were like, no way. To the merch we're carrying, everything is going to be something new and different the mall doesn't already have. I know Holly suggested the, what is it, the Highway Patrol is going to start doing, you know, testing for all the teenagers. Everybody's going to be in there, and they just thought, the cops come around daily while we're working, and they check in with us, and they're very excited, very thrilled that we're going to be there. I think it's going to be cool.
Yeah, I actually tattoo on a bunch of police officers from Independence, the Chief of Police in Green Valley. So as far as them feeling, bringing safety to that, I mean, I feel like, you know, it's a very approachable business as far as our model goes. I can't, like, when you guys see it open, you'll understand. If you've seen our other shop, it's beautiful. So it is more of a high-end type of place. You know, I wanted to come present normal to everybody today. So that's the kind of presentation that we bring when we're, when we're doing something. I put a lot of time and effort into this one so far.
Okay. Any commissioners, any additional questions? All right. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Right. I don't see any, but I will ask, anyone who'd like to speak in favor of this case? Okay. Anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this case? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close the hearing. Any final questions for staff, or I'll entertain a motion?
Chair.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to be approved, case twenty-five dash two hundred dash zero four, special use permit, eighteen eight oh one East Thirty-Ninth Street, D zero nine D. Second.
All right. I have a first and a second. All right. I will call for the vote.
And just before I begin the vote, I did want to address Commissioner Nesbit's question about tattoo establishments. So I pulled the report on City Records. This would be the sixth tattoo establishment licensed in Independence.
Okay, so we're still, we're still low then? Okay.
Commissioner Nesbit?
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Ashbaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner Torres?
Yes.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
Chair Wiley?
Yes. And the motion passes for the special use permit, six to zero, on case number two five four hundred zero, or two hundred zero four. All right. Thank you and good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You guys have the mall soon.
All right. Anything good for the order tonight? Anyone have anything to share? Anything we need to know, Rick? I'll just update you, because he told me this yesterday. We have a couple of light meetings, but it looks like, is it our June tenth meeting? We may have eight or nine cases. So that, that would bring a, bring a drink and a snack night, so.
On June?
June, June tenth.
Yeah, I think the next one's only got three cases, but the one after that, we're probably going to have eight or nine cases on that one.
All right. Anything else you want us to know?
Don't have anything else at this time. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much, staff. Thank you. Attorney Mitch. And we are adjourned at six forty-three.